Everybody.
Mm hmm.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Lee School Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. We are in a hybrid fashion. Some of us are at the Lee Middleland High School in the conference room, and some of us are doing via Zoom. We are in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, D L C thirty A, section twenty. This meeting will take place virtually via Zoom. I'm going to call the meeting to order pursuant to M G L C, section thirty A, section twenty. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And could you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mission statement of the Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can I trouble you for a roll call, please? Mr. Ovan?
Here.
Mr. Kennis?
Here.
Mrs. Kuscher?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Strickler?
Here.
Okay. Our first order of business is approval of the October twelfth Lee School Committee meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I motion. I will make a motion to accept the October twelfth minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please? Mr. Ovan?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right, and next up, we need to approve the October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one Lee School Committee meeting minutes. We have a motion.
I move to accept the October twenty-sixth minute, meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please? Mr. Ovan?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher? Ms. Larmen?
Upstate. I wasn't there.
Mr. Nichols?
Upstate.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Brenda. All right, Randy, you're up next with public input.
Yeah, the members of the public are invited to address the committee at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee. Anybody out there tonight? I think we're in conflict tonight with a vaccination panel discussion for kids.
I'm spilling in for Kathy Hall.
Oh. Well, good for you.
Nobody else has anything to say. I have a quick word from Kathy Hall. Uh, Lee Library, you can visit the leelibrary.org to find all wonderful activities for the month of November. For the Chamber of Commerce, they're having a groundbreaking ceremony for the Eagle Mill Project, which is tomorrow at eleven A. M. You can go to the eagle mill, uh, virtures dot com to see the process of the project. The Lee Youth Association, uh, pickleball court is ready at the tennis court with the Lee Athletic Field. Um, and the skating rink frame will be built sometime after Thanksgiving. And the eleventh hour, the eleventh day, the eleventh month, please remember our veterans and thank you for our service. Um, and Kathy Hall says, thank you to all of us and have a happy Thanksgiving. That's it, bye now.
All right. Anybody else? I think we're free to move forward.
All right, I see Emma for our student reports. Hi, Emma.
Hi. Uh, so very short report tonight. I don't know which of you remember from last year, but we are working on the student government was working on cleaning up the courtyards in the center of the school. And so the senior class from last year actually left some money that they had left over from not going on a senior trip or whatever other things they weren't able to do. And so we planned to buy benches for the courtyard in the kind of middle school area, because that one doesn't really have to buy stone slabs put underneath. So we can start to turn that into like a usable area that people can go and sit in. Um, yeah, and that's all I really have tonight. That's just what we, that is our next thing that we're planning on doing. Right now, we're just working on fundraiser ideas.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much, Emma. I'm really pleased that you guys are gonna make something out of that little courtyard. So thanks for sharing.
Yeah, I think we're excited for that.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be nice for that area to be used in a, in a social way. Um, okay, next up is the chair report. First thing is, I just want to remind all of our school committee members, if you have not brought in your vaccination card to the superintendent's office for it to be photocopied, please make sure that you do so, uh, soon, because they need to be done by Friday.
Well, you're not employees, so.
December first, December first. Um, so, but don't wait till the last minute. Don't be a last minute nanny. Um, bring them in so that we're not stressing people out.
Yeah, I'm just gonna wait till I record my booster shot.
Okay. Which is Friday, in case anybody didn't know. Um, uh, the other thing I wanted to propose to the committee is retaking the school committee goals rubric after our December meeting, that we took it after our August meeting. I have made it into a Google form, so it's a little more user-friendly. Um, and if we would like to do that, make a motion to do that, then I will send it out after our December meeting, and we can see what progress we have made on our rubric from where we were after the August meeting.
Andrea, is your thinking to do this sort of a quarterly evaluation or review?
Kind of my hope is to keep using it to see if we're making progress into where we're going and not just sort of do it once and then like stick it in the back somewhere and not. I, I mean, if we're gonna use data, let's use data to inform our practices, not just to collect data for data sake. So.
Would it, so, so we're, all right, we can have a discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Randy.
Well, I was just, are we talking, you know, Betsy was talking quarterly, is that the frequency quarterly or biannually?
It would have been four, at that point, it would be quarterly, because it would have been three or four months.
Okay. Well, I guess that's, I guess it's more of a question. Is it, is it? Are we striving for quarterly or are we?
I don't know. We have to, we have to make a motion to decide how we want to do it.
How about, how about this? I make a motion, um, to retake our school committee goals rubric as Andrew, as Andrew has stated after our December meeting.
So.
Well, so, um.
So we can, and then.
I'm making a motion.
Discussion, yes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Frequency?
Yes.
Let's do it quarterly.
So, so, yeah, I mean, doesn't, I mean, what, I, I, I just don't know. I've never been a part of that type of the process, but.
I don't think this committee has ever been that part of that type of process.
Or even, even professionally, I'm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think personally, I think that if we're gonna do, if we're gonna have a goal, then we should be collecting data on that goal and part of collecting, which we do, we, we set a goal back in August time. Um, and part of having that goal is collecting data towards that goal, and that rubric was part of, part of the goal was the self-assessment. And so part of self-assessment is collecting data towards that self-assessment. So if we're gonna do that, we need to be doing it frequently, not just willy-nilly.
No, I, I believe there should be some structure. I guess my question is, is really what, you know, what, what has been recommended? Or if this has been done somewhere else, is it, is it quarter, is it biannually, is it every other month? I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what the frequency is.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's been a criteria.
I think my, my opinion is that this is incredibly labor-intensive work to do, you know, compiling the data. And I think that having it quarterly, seeing as how we meet, you know, infrequently every month, but there's still a good time, good gap between our meetings. So our, you know, it probably would be better to have the evaluation quarterly on a more frequent basis throughout the year to help keep us on track um, with our, with our goals. This is my opinion. If we're meeting like once a week, and we could stretch it out a little bit further, because we're, we're staying so on top of what we're doing here. But since we're meeting once a month, it might be nice to have the evaluation more frequent.
More frequently than quarterly?
No, 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 quarterly, sorry, quarterly.
Yeah.
Quarterly is great for this first year, and then we can, you know.
We can reevaluate.
Future, we can say, oh, that was too much, or that was not enough, but trial basis first year, let's do quarterly, is my suggestion.
And my hope of putting it into a Google form is that it makes the, the data collection quicker and easier to sort of pull out and then look at, as opposed to before when you just circled all the rubrics, then you had to send them into Brenda, and then Brenda had to get them to me, and so by doing it on a form, you just put it in there, and then I can pull it out and just immediately pull it into a spreadsheet, and then we can look at it from there. So it keeps it confidential, because I won't know who's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have it set so that nobody emails me.
Yeah, I, I will follow the, the will of the group on this. I'll be a follower.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah.
I have the Google form set up so that nobody, you won't know whose email it's coming from, so I'll send it out to everybody's email, but it won't track whose email has responded. And you can only respond once, and then the only thing you won't be able to do is make comments per question, but I'll put a comment box in the bottom, and those will get pulled into the sheet separate from your response, if that makes sense. So I still won't know who responded. So it'll still keep everything anonymous.
Good. All for it.
We need, we need a motion. So I'm going to amend my motion to, uh, retake our school committee goals rubric after our December meeting and to take it, uh, to have this rubric taken quarterly, uh, there forward.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, Brenda. Mr. Ovan?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher? Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
That's all I got for you. All right, next up is our superintendent report from Michael Richard.
All right, good evening, and thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. A quick enrollment update as of November, uh, the first, we are up, uh, we're up five students, great news. Uh, you know, this is a topic that came up actually at the M A S C, M A S S, uh, conference last week was the struggles that Berkshire communities are facing, and how do we try to, uh, work with what we've got uh, and deal with the, the challenges that we all see, which is declining enrollment. In this case, uh, we've got, um, uh, some improvement here. We lost one kindergartner, we gained a second grader, we gained, uh, three third graders, a tenth grader, and eleventh grader. So, uh, so we're up, uh, again, five students, so let's keep that trend, uh, moving in our, uh, in our favor. I think that's great news. A quick personnel update, Kristen Decker has been named to, uh, be Jen Norton's Special Education Secretary. So Kristen, that's, that's a transfer for her, uh, from a former position as a paraprofessional. Gail Tyer is joining us at the L E S cafeteria. Sarah Nichols is a long-term substitute. I don't know if any of you know her or not, but she's working in sixth grade social studies. And then Dave Duquette, uh, again, former, uh, employee here is returned, filling in that math interventionist position. And we know that, uh, that, uh, math M C A S, um, you know, retakes are occurring, and, and we're hopeful that, uh, the work that Dave did with those students uh, will pay great dividends for us. Dave's an excellent addition to our staff. COVID nineteen, uh, updates with, you know, that these are regular for you. Not too much changed here, uh, except that the vaccination status uh, masking requirement goes through at least, uh, January fifteenth. That doesn't necessarily do much to negatively or positively impact what we're doing. I can tell you that the students and staff are complying with our, uh, protocols and, and policies. You know, with, with almost a hundred percent, um, fidelity, so it's, it's nice to see. Cases in school, so COVID cases, we had nine cases among this, the L E S community, and four cases among the middle and high school community. The response has been terrific. I can tell you that, um, this week's pooled testing, or our routine COVID safety checks, as they're more formally known, um, resulted in all negative tests for everyone who participated this week, so that's great news for us. Uh, in the event that we do have close contact in school, test and stay, test and stay, excuse me, protocols are in place. And a reminder, uh, while I appreciate that all students and staff want to be in school and at work, uh, every day, if you are not feeling well, please stay home, uh, make sure that you take care of you, make sure that you get tested as necessary, um, so that we can, we can really stem any spread, uh, of COVID nineteen among our school community members. Vaccination data, uh, we continue to trend in, in a positive direction. I'll be very curious to see when they add the five-to-eleven-year-old group, uh, to this in the coming weeks, how we do. Uh, I know that Mr. Mertnik will talk about, um, a vaccination clinic that's set up. I've got a slide on that in a few minutes as well. Our students at L E S, uh, but we really are moving in the right direction. Uh, we're at, we're over seventy percent of students at L M H S who are vaccinated, and we certainly know that by December first, we will be at a hundred percent, uh, for all of our, uh, all of our employees. So that's great news. Uh, there's just a reminder about routine COVID, uh, safety checks. Nutrition update again, the supply is a challenge. It's a national issue, and I, I'll keep coming back to this because, uh, we keep making adjustments to our menus, so I appreciate the patience, uh, that students, staff, and families are giving us. Uh, we, we have to punt sometimes based on what is able to come in. Uh, again, it's a national issue, not just a local one. Staffing needs, I continue to remind everyone that if you are looking for employment, the Lee Public Schools may be the place for you. We need substitute teachers and paraprofessionals. We need food service employees, and certainly bus drivers, uh, through due for. Uh, strategic planning update, uh, the team met, uh, on Saturday, the twenty-third, and Tuesday, the second. I think it's important, uh, this key takeaway that I have highlighted on here is that what I heard from student participants, and it was supported by faculty members, was that there, there has this, this idea, this culture of mediocrity being okay. Um, and, and that's, that's, that was hard to hear, uh, but I would prefer to hear it and address it uh, than to ignore it and pretend it's not there. So, uh, the group really said, we need to find a way to make, um, excellence the culture in the Lee Public Schools, and I think that we can do that. I think that, um, it will become the new and sustained standard for everything that we do. And one of the things that was sort of, uh, discussed was the, this idea of excellence expected. Like, those two things are synonymous. What you do when you go, when you attend the Lee Public Schools, or whether you work for the Lee Public Schools, excellence is expected, and anything less than that, um, means you're not working to your full potential. So we understand that excellence means different things for different people. We understand that excellence for some students means they're getting a B. And maybe it's a C plus. For others, it's an A plus, and that's okay, but the effort and the excellence, uh, needs to be expected with the, the, we have to give everything that we have to our students, and we have to have our, encourage our students to give us everything they have to be successful. Vax clinics, uh, again, for students, we're gonna have one Saturday, the twentieth of November, and then Saturday, the eleventh of December. Reminder to those people who are watching at home, these slides will be available on our, uh, on our website tomorrow. So if you don't catch this right now, you'll be able to, uh, check these slides again. Mr. Mertnik is pushing information out about this to his, uh, to his families on a regular basis. That's what I have for you. Quickly, try to keep it short, sweet, to the point, focus on the important things. I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? All right, thank you very much, Mike.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, we have our principals and director reports. First up, Tim Martin from Lee Elementary School. Hi, Tim.
Hello, everybody. So this is our report for November. Uh, grades closed for quarter one, October twenty-eighth, and report cards went home on November fifth. Parent-teacher conferences are tomorrow, Wednesday, November tenth. Uh, the after-school and out-of-school time grant, also known as the ASOS grant, was submitted and accepted at the end of last month. This grant will be used to fund an after-school program through the Flying Cloud Institute, as well as summer programming here at L E S this coming summer. Uh, the Flying Cloud Institute will also be collaborating with the fourth-grade teaching team to implement a standards-based science engineering unit over the course of one week in February. This is also grant-funded, uh, through them. Uh, fifth, fifth grade is implementing a program this year called Future Goals and Hockey Scholar, which is sponsored by EverFi, the N H L, and the Boston Bruins. Uh, uses real-world examples through sports to help explain math and science concepts. Uh, Army National Guard reservist Corporal Patrick Finnegan spoke to the sixth-grade class last month about his training and experiences in the Army National Guard. This is part of our efforts to introduce sixth graders to several different career paths. There are two COVID vaccination clinics, as Superintendent Richard, uh, mentioned. Uh, they'll be taking place at L E S in our gymnasium. Uh, one will be November twentieth, from nine o'clock in the morning to noon. The other will be December eleventh, from nine to noon. Uh, this is in collaboration with Berkshire Public Health Alliance and Tri-Town Health. Uh, information was sent home via email to all the families of L E S, uh, with links on how to sign up, as well as, uh, an information session that's actually happening right this moment. Uh, and it was also put on our, our Facebook account, uh, and we'll be putting it on the L E S, uh, webpage as well. Uh, we're trying to really push this out so that families have access to these vaccine, vaccines. Uh, our monthly walk to school took place November third. We had about a hundred participants, uh, including special guests from the Kiwanis Club. Uh, there were several canned goods donated by participants for those that are, uh, food insecure in our community. Special thanks again to the Lee Police Department and to Jen Carlino, Julia Warner, and Lori Curtin for making this happen each month. Uh, at the end of this month, we will be implementing the Botvin Life Skills Program for grades five and six. This is part of our S E L, um, curriculum here at L E S. Uh, both school adjustment council, counselors will be utilized to teach this curriculum, and we hope to expand it to grades three and four later this year. Uh, and lastly, a Massachusetts Safe Roots to School representative is coming back to Lee Elementary Tuesday, November twenty-third, uh, to do an observation of our dismissal procedure. They came a few years ago to do an observation of our facility and to make recommendations for dismissal. Uh, some of these recommendations are being used today, uh, and this updated observation should help us as we continually look to improve the safety and efficiency of our dismissal procedure. And that's what I have for you this month.
Anybody have any questions for? Tim?
Hey, Tim, it's Randy. Just, uh, on the after-school program, when do you, when, when will you have more information on that?
So we've got some after-school programs going on right now. Um, like, chess club is starting up. There was an art club that's already started. There's actually two art clubs, uh, one from I S one eighty-three. Um, in terms of the Flying Cloud Institute, that's probably going to be after January. I've been talking with the coordinator, and we're just working out a time that works best for them uh, in terms of their staff, uh, but everything's in place, uh, to make that happen. So it's probably gonna be late winter, early spring.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody have any other questions for Tim?
Can I jump in on it real quick? Sorry. You know, I, I think, Randy, I appreciate that question, and Tim, I appreciate your update. One of the things that the Strategic Planning Committee has been talking about is the challenge around uh, transportation for after-school programming, uh, the costs, the time, and, and the interest. So we, we do plan to try to reach out to the community to see, um, you know, what the interest levels are. I think, I think they will be there, but the challenge again will be the cost, uh, to the district, and then the amount of time, depending on how many kids are taking advantage of it, how much time they, they'll be sitting on a bus, uh, late afternoon into early evening, and whether that interest will continue. So, uh, after-school programming has lots of challenges, but we are trying to find ways to, um, mitigate those challenges.
All right, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Up next, we have Greg Brigenti from Lee Middleland High School. Hi, Greg.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'd like to start off today with some congratulations, quite a few of them, actually. First, to the new members of the National Honor Society who were inducted on October twenty-first. And those are Aaron Armstrong, Angelina Ardioli, Jacob Bianco, Jack Clark, Ben Cooper, Madison Della Giustina, Amy Desiada, Sophie Herman, Lindsay Jondro, Tapon Consegara, Matt Kinney, Madison La Rock, Isabella Lovato, Anna Martin, Tyler Moran, Luke Roach, and McGuire Russo. Excuse me. The National Honor Society, as you know, is, um, the highest honor that can be achieved, um, at the high school level, and so congratulations to those, uh, seniors and juniors. Congratulations also to the following members of the class of twenty-two, who were selected by the state, um, excuse me, as John and Abigail Adams Scholars. Grace Basak, Tyler Brock, Elizabeth Brown, Dylan Ely, Carter Gagan, Emma Polari, Emma Puntin, Hayden Shuck, Evan Trombley, and Elliot Winston. Uh, this recognition is based upon performance in M C A S testing, and, uh, these ten students should also be recognized for volunteering, uh, to take the M C A S last year, um, because for the class of twenty-two, it was optional. Congratulations to the football team for making the Division Eight statewide tournament, uh, while they made it to the round of sixteen. Uh, it was a great game on Friday night. Um, they do have one more consolation game on Thursday night at six o'clock here at the school. Congratulations to the volleyball team for winning the Western Mass Championship and making the statewide tournament as well. And, uh, tonight, they actually just won in the round of sixteen, and so coming up next in the round of eight, probably Friday evening, um, here at L M H S, we will definitely be hosting that round again. And congra, congratulations to the members of the cross-country team as well, which had an awesome year this year. And in the Berkshire County Invitationals, the boys finished fifth with Josh Perry, awarded all Berkshire honors, and the girls finished third with Emily Holian, Anna Martin, and Bree Kelly on the all Berkshire squad. Many of our runners will also participate in the state meet coming up soon. This Friday and Saturday evening at seven P. M. here in our auditorium, the Fall Festival of Shakespeare returns, and our drama program presents Romeo and Juliet. Admission is five dollars for students and seniors and ten dollars for adults. Uh, you'll also have an opportunity to watch the performance from Shakespeare and Company's Tina Packer Playhouse on Saturday, November twentieth at twelve P. M. That is live-streamed only this year. The Packer Playhouse will be closed to the public, open only to participants, um, in the various schools who, um, participate in the, in the plays. Information on that livestream can be found at shakespeare.org. Um, having popped in on several of their rehearsals, um, I encourage everybody to attend. It should be a really great show on Friday and Saturday. Save the date for a few events coming up soon. On Sunday, November twenty-eighth, from three to eight, the class of two thousand and twenty-five, the freshman class, is running a dine-to-donate event at the Knox Trail Inn in Otis. Um, ten percent of all the proceeds during that time slot will go towards the freshman class as they begin the process of, uh, building up their class treasury as they move towards prom and graduation and all that good stuff. And on Wednesday, December first, the Shakespeare program is running a dine-to-donate down at the locker room here in Lee. Again, to help raise funds to offset the, the many costs that, um, that program does bear. Also, the L M H S bands and choruses will present a concert on Tuesday, December seventh. Also, the LMHS bands and choruses will present a concert on Tuesday, December 7th at 7:00 PM in the Z. It'll be our first live concert since February 2020, that it was open to the public, just wear some masks. There is no admission fee for that, so everybody is welcome. We also will be broadcasting that on our stream, live stream feed through Facebook. So that is it for me, unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, next up, special, special education with Jen Norton. Hi, Jen.
Hi, everyone. Um, there's not a ton to report on my end right now, but we definitely have a few things I'd like to highlight. We are actively looking throughout the month of December as to whether or not we're going to be able to increase our three-year-old program to four days. Currently, right now, we have them coming. We have two groups of students coming Monday and Wednesday and then Tuesday and Thursday. Unless we get a directive, you know, that COVID for the safety guidelines, it looks as if for second semester, we will indeed be able to go to the four days. We're actually polling the families in the next week or so to see how many of our families are going to take advantage of that for the four days a week. So I'll bring that to you guys next time we meet. Um, we have one more grant that we're in the process of completing. It's actually a grant that was given to us and it is really for foster or homeless families. So it's just kind of nice. We'll be able to have a little bit of funding to help families in need. So as soon as we have that finalized, I will let you know. I anticipate us knowing that by the next school committee meeting as well. And we can let you know how we've been able to break up some of that funding. We've spoken about it in the administrative meeting a couple of times already as well. I am going to implore people, anyone you know, we are very short, short as far as substitutes. We do still have our ads running, but if you know anybody who is in the field or is at home and wants to substitute, even if it's just one or two regular days, we strongly encourage people to apply to do that if they, especially if they have a background of working with students. And we have a couple of positions that we're filling right now. We have some resumes in. We have a few switches in students who require some one-on-one. So we're bringing in some new people as well. We're working with Perkins to do some evaluations for some students, which is kind of exciting. We're doing a much more involved evaluation than we've ever done. So it's kind of new and exciting for us. We're able to collaborate with people again in person, which is always nice. And I don't really have much else for you right now. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Jen? All right, thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, we have our committee reports. Finance committee with Randy.
All right, thanks, Mike, for putting the PowerPoint up. So the finance subcommittee I met earlier this evening and we talked about the accounts payable warrant and the subcommittee did approve the amount of $194,778 cents. As you can see on your screen, the, there's some detail on the right-hand side. So that is the accounts payable total.
Mike, do you want to explain what we've gotten?
Sure, pretty straightforward for this and for payroll on the next slide. But Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative, we've got $26,000 due for in transportation. That's regular contracted costs. And then Eversource is our electric bill at the middle and high school. Again, down below, we've got a due-for bill of 10, just over $10,000. Sabro environmental for some, some waste management cleanup that needs to happen on a pretty regular basis and hasn't been done in a while. And then Valley Educational is some special education cost. So nothing, nothing extraordinary here. Most of this is, well, a good chunk of this is directly related to instructional services and some of it is related to transportation as always.
I will accept a motion for the accounts payable.
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable for an amount of $194,778 cents.
I'll second that.
Pick one, Brenda. Any discussion? Okay. We have a roll call, Brenda.
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscherak?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right, the, the next warrant that was approved by the finance subcommittee was for payroll, which the number is $608,574.30.
I will accept the motion, or do you want to explain what the next?
Yeah, the only, the only difference there is, you'll, you'll notice there's a slight uptick from, from the last month. That's because there are some longevity payments and such that get made in the second payment in October, which is why that, that October 28th number is a little bit higher. So those are annually expected costs, but that's just the reasoning behind the slight increase.
All right, I will accept a motion for the payroll.
I make a motion to accept the payroll warrant in the amount of $608,000,
I thought you. Any discussion? All right. Brenda, can you roll call us again?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. We don't have any old business. So the next thing we need to move on to is new business, which is the class of 2025 and class of 2026 revolving accounts approved.
So the, each, each year, the, the classes at, at the high school engage in fundraising efforts to support, as you heard Emma talk about earlier, prom, senior trip and other events. They need accounts to host the monies that they collect. So those go into revolving accounts. So the class of 2025, which is currently at the high school in grade nine, and then the class of 2026, which is an eighth grade class. We're getting a little bit ahead, ahead here, but I'm just trying to save this step for next year. We'd like to create those revolving accounts so that any fundraising they do can be deposited into those respective revolving accounts. Normally, we'd have some accounts to close, but because of COVID and the impact associated therewith, we're keeping those accounts open a little bit longer to give those classes a chance to spend any remaining monies that they have. So I would ask the school committee to approve the creation of a revolving account individually for the class of 2025 and the class of 2026.
So I will accept the motion to create a revolving account for the class of 2025.
Second.
No.
Um, so I'll make the motion to create the revolving account for the class of 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Okay, and then we need a motion to create an account for the class of 2026.
I think, no, it's all you. Your, your turn. No, it's your turn.
I would like to make a motion to create a revolving account for the class of 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, go ahead, Brenda.
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. And then next thing on the agenda is the LES PTO donation.
So the Lee Elementary School PTO was engaged in meetings with Principal Mertnik and having discussions around some student funding that, that would normally be available for purchases that aren't necessarily budgeted for, comes from fundraising efforts. However, we all know what the impact of the last 18 months has had on fundraising efforts. And so when, as part of the conversation, the, the PTO, LES PTO offered to donate some money to the school for those purchases that may need to be made on, on occasion. And that offer was in the amount of $10,000. So a super, super generous offer by, on the part of the LES PTO, looking for the school committee to approve or to the receipt of those funds to go into that student account.
So we don't need to create an account?
We have an account.
We already have one, okay. All right, so we need, somebody needs to make an emotion to approve the donation of how much was it?
$10,000.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the donation of $10,000 from the PTO to Lee Elementary School.
Second. Any discussion?
Was that number just, they just came up with 10,000 or is that based on historical need or knowledge?
Tim, can you answer that one?
I can, if I can unmute myself, sorry about that. It, it was a number that they chose. They had asked how much had been in that account historically. And while, you know, being the dean for the past four years, I didn't know what that number is. The number that had been shared with me is it's somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 is a healthy amount of money to have in that account. And they took that amount and decided upon the 10,000.
Very generous of them.
It was very generous.
It's incredible and, and send them our, our thanks as well to Tim.
100%, I will absolutely do that at the next meeting for sure.
Any other discussion? Did I make it slow, roll call?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is future business. And the next meeting is on December 14th, 2021. And after that meeting, we will do our evaluation again. So I will send that out after the next meeting. And after that, our next thing on our agenda is adjournment. So I will entertain, entertain the motion.
There's a hand.
Nice to speak.
I'm sorry, I got your motion.
Oh, sorry.
Somebody make a second up on the floor.
Andrea. Andrea.
Kathy, we already did public comment. I did read out your thing, Kathy, so everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
So did we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Hey, Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:45.